At this time, we've called a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for January 19, 2016, 5:00 PM to order. First item on the agenda is to consent the agenda items. What's your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent of agenda items. Any discussion on any? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pause, nope. Motion carries. What we'll do at this time is we'll drop down to item 3F. And for sake of time for some people in the audience here. And that's consider a motion authorizing the submittal of an application to the Department of Economic Development, DED, for Minnesota Investment Fund financing for $450,000 to assist Kraft Heinz company with facility improvements.
I would like to hear from the Community Development Director a little bit more about this program.
Mr. Schnobrick, would you be willing to explain the Minnesota Investment Fund?
As best I can. Dave Schnobrick, Community Development Director. The Minnesota Investment Fund program is offered by the State of Minnesota through the Department of Employment and Economic Development. For a, and the intention of the program is to create, or to support the creation of jobs. In this particular case, we're dealing with a private company, but the applicant is the city, or would be the municipality in which the business is located. Typically, you know, the amount of assistance is generally based on the number of jobs that are going to be created. And in this particular case, we're looking at 90 retained jobs and 50 new jobs. And the request is for $450,000. I might note that that's an approximate number. The first step in the process is to submit the application material. The state will review that. And then, you know, advise us as to, you know, the amount of an award that they will support. And then we'll go through the contractual basis with the company, you know, regarding the grant.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just wondered if they, if there's any legal issues that we should be, that we should consider in light of the fact that it's the city that's applying for the financing from DED?
Mr. President, I'm not aware, Counselor Webster, I'm not aware of any issues that would impact this. I believe it is something that we've done.
I might note that we previously applied and received funding through this program for Palm Beach Marine Craft, who's no longer in the community, for Beacon, and also for MPI after the fire in 2005.
In the same dollar amount, or approximate dollar amount?
They were a little bit lower in those instances.
And other than staff time, the cost to the city is what?
At this point, we're not aware of any cost to the city.
No matching funds, no?
I think after the state gets the application and reviews, that we'll have a better idea if that may or may not be a requirement.
And Mr. President, do we have any idea of the timeline involved here?
According to state representatives, upon the submittal of the application, it needs to be a complete submittal. They will review and respond within apparently a two-week time period.
I know we have our Kraft people here. Do they want to say anything, or not? I'll put you on the spot, but they probably have to talk at the mic, though, yeah.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Matt Hippie, plant manager, and live in Mankato, Minnesota, at 200 Partridge Path. What I'd like to say is we're in a very competitive business market. This is one step and one piece of our process, and would like you to very much consider. It would help us, as we stated, retain 90 jobs and bring in approximately 50 more over the next couple of years.
So that's about a two-year process, is what you're thinking to complete the project?
We're looking at starting production lines in June of 2017. With some ongoing training and development.
And then, I understand that, that all the construction will be within the existing building?
Proposed, there might be some expansion of the building also.
Oh, okay, okay, alright.
Proposed, as we move forward, waiting for some other decisions.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I guess I got a question maybe to staff, or how did we arrive at $450,000? Is that just, is there a formula for this, or?
That particular number comes from the industry that's requesting the finance. And probably we should just take a step back, just for explanation purposes. You know, like all, you know, things, sometimes you see the tip of the iceberg here. The S is actually the public aspect of it. You know, Mr. Schnobrick and Brian Toll, and myself, as well as a little, small portion of the mayor, under his signature, we've been working with representatives from Kraft for probably the last two and a half, three months. And under the mayor's signature, he put forth all of the different economic development programs that the city has to offer. Now, for one reason or another, they may said, no, we don't want this one, but we do want this one. And MIF is one of those programs they sought to avail themselves of, at which time we were also working with the State of Minnesota, DED representatives. We all met here at City Hall, so that the state and the city work in unison on these programs, so there's no big surprise when it gets to the end. And so Kraft has had, or their representative, has had, you know, discussions with DED already, talking about the different programs the state has available to them. And so you're going to see probably a, a collection of this program and that program, some state programs, possibly some city programs, and also maybe some programs that the utility has available to it to assist this particular development project. So this is just the first thing that's come up. The City Council and the Public Utility Commission will likely see, you know, maybe two, maybe three more of these different programs that they may want to look at. And then again, after they, they get through some of the process of evaluating the program, they may say, no, we don't want to, we don't want to do that program. So this is just kind of like the beginning. They have all the information for the different programs that we have to offer, and we're just going to wait and see which ones they want to bring forward. That's what's led us up to this point, basically.
Mr. President, I, you know, I know we know Kraft and Heinz has been here for 60 years, 400 employees, $17 million payroll. We strongly support, I know I strongly certainly support this. And I think with this fall, when we heard the sad news that Target was closing, this certainly is, brings a smile to our face to have some new jobs created in our community. So thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Dave?
Just one further thing I'd like to note is that we are required to hold a public hearing on the application. So once the application is, you know, more complete position, we will be scheduling a public hearing, and it could be as soon as your next meeting.
I was going to ask you about, so it's a couple of weeks to prepare it?
Yes.
It's not a gigantic, horrific application?
It's not as bad as I've seen in the past, so.
I have to agree also that we thank Kraft for being here and wanting to expand, and I would like to make a motion to authorize the submittal of this application.
I'll second that. We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pause, nope. Motion carries. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Alright, we'll go back to item 2A. Consider resolution approving the First Amendment of restated development agreement with Minnesota Strauss LLC for the property located at 103 to 123 South Minnesota Street.
Mr. President, members of the council, the City Council, at the request of the developer, Mr. Kretsch, instructed staff in our office to revise the development agreement and to specifically remove the previous provisions that included a debt service ratio with respect to the TIF allocation. We've done so. We have frankly, between Dave Schnobrick and I, probably prepared many different versions of this agreement. They were reviewed by Mr. Kretsch, by several attorneys working with him, by his lender. And my understanding is that the agreement that's been presented tonight for your consideration is acceptable by all parties concerned. As far as the changes to it, one of the things that the lender required is that the city would actually be signing a TIF note. And this is just evidence of what our agreement is, under the development agreement and the TIF plan, that if the increments are paid based upon the project, that these would be paid out according to the terms of the agreement. There is no further obligation on the part of the city. This is not a general obligation. It's not an actual debt that is owed. It just is further confirmation of what we have agreed to do in any case. It is capped at the $2,144,841. And otherwise, I think all of the terms, the substance of the agreement is substantially identical to what it was before. I know Dave has, I think, been very careful about making sure that what is going to be allowed to be reimbursed under the TIF plan is what is provided for by statute. So it's going to cover those things and those things only. So based upon that, I believe that Mr. Schnobrick and I can recommend that the council would approve this, and agree that the city could sign it.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
I'll second that.
Could we also include, as we have in past development agreements and things like that, that if there is next week, a comment brought up by one of the many attorneys, that the city attorney has the ability to make adjustments to the agreement, as long as it doesn't substantially change the terms of the agreement? Because sometimes it's just clarification words, and sometimes it's-
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
Little stuff. But in the past, you've authorized the city attorney to be allowed to do that.
I'll include that.
I'll include that in my second.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Offered resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion?
Let's build this thing.
Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item 3A, consider resolution accepting donations to the New Ulm Police Department to be used for the purposes of early childhood, family education, safety, fares, bicycle helmet program.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Offered resolution, waived the reading. The amount is Lyons Bank, $100, South Point, $60, Citizens Bank, $200, and France and Bank, $30. And the mayor will send out thank yous. Finance director, please, call a roll.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item 3B, consider a motion to set a date for a public hearing on the 2016 MSAS improvement project for Tuesday, February 16, 2016, at 5:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pause, nope. Motion carries. Item 3C, consider resolution accepting donations and memorials to the New Ulm Public Library.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Offered resolution, waived the reading. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pause, nope. Motion carries.
Resolution.
Oh, resolution, sorry. Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item 3D, consider motion to receive a project proposal for Nathan First, Heart of New Ulm Project, to paint street murals on select, at select intersections in New Ulm.
Mr. First is here to present, if we would like to hear from him.
I think we would like to hear from him.
Alright, Nathan First, 506 and One Half South Jefferson. Here today, well, first I'd like to thank you for your time. It's an honor to be able to present this project to you. I guess I can first start by saying what I'm doing here in New Ulm. My position is with the Minnesota Green Corps, and particularly, my host site is at the heart of New Ulm, and I'm working on active transportation issues, which basically means walking and biking. And that means Safe House to School. So this, this project came about because, you know, we're thinking about, how, how do we kind of build off the momentum of this recent Safe House to School plan that had been finished last June? And we sort of need to kind of build some community knowledge about Safe House to School program, and I thought this would be a very interesting way to do it. It sort of takes into account the strong art tradition of New Ulm, and also the strong body, strong mind ethic. So more particulars about the project, there are four intersections that I would like, or I propose have murals painted on them in New Ulm. Paint and Fourth South Street, paint and Second South Street, State and Sixth North Street, and Minnesota and Third North Street. And it's, should be noted that these intersections are all controlled by four-way stops. So that was one of the concerns that had been voiced before, was if you painted a mural in an intersection, it might distract someone. We're reducing that hopefully by having a four-way stop there. And so I can, now I will address some of the questions in the agenda packet. And the first, one of the first questions I'd like to address is, what is the value of this, of this project? And I think that, you know, promoting the knowledge of Safe House to School and active transportation is valuable, promoting public art, and especially like the Fire Hydrant Project, which I think was pretty well-received by the community, and engaging the community in, in some safety conversations. So the type of paint that I'm, that has been used in the past, and in my research, I found it was a latex-based traffic paint. It's non-retroreflective, which means it's not shiny, so at night headlights won't be shining off the paint. And also an anti-skid additive can be added. Who maintains and repaints the mural? There would be a maintenance clause similar to the Fire Hydrant Project. That would be a three-year, basically, maintenance obligation for the artist that would be painting it, and touch-ups as necessary. So written into the grants that we're doing, that we'll be pursuing, will be receiving extra supplies so we can accommodate for these touch-ups. Is it a distraction to motorists or pedestrians? We're trying to eliminate that by placing them at four-way intersections, and basically setting some criteria where the designs cannot have elements that would draw pedestrians into the roadway. Another question was, you know, would motorists use this as an area to basically burn out and vandalize and affect the murals? I think it's sort of a disservice to say that, to assume that it will happen, but you can't be naive, and, you know, with the maintenance clause, hopefully, we will be able to accommodate for any situation like that in the three-year period. And then, is there adequate traction? I think the anti-skid additives would help provide the necessary road conditions. So with that, are there any questions?
I guess I have one, maybe for the city attorney. I mean, does, do you see anything, or, you know, I mean, start off with, that'd be my first question, you know?
I think that the presentation correctly notes that, of course, this can't be done without the permission of the council. Beyond that, I don't see any legal issues. I guess I'm, depending upon what a contract would say, there's reference in here to removing the murals by pressure washing. I'm not sure if our engineer knows how that would work with latex paint.
Mr. Curry might have some information on that.
Or he might, might be aware of that. I don't know who's going to be responsible for that, when the contract is up. The city has to incur that expense, or if someone else will be paying for that. As a motorcyclist, and knowing there's at least one other person who may ride a scooter, even without a helmet sometimes, we may want to be careful of making sure that in fact there is anti-skid paint on there, understanding that it's a totally controlled intersection. But if there's an accident, and we've approved this, and an expert is going to argue that the coefficient of friction has been reduced, our streets are primarily for vehicular traffic. And if we're affecting the safety of them by having this type of mural, I think that's something that we should be giving some real thought to. I just don't know enough about them to know if that's really going to be an impact or not.
I guess, I have another question, I guess, for you, Nathan. Is there anything like this that's been done in the state that you're aware of?
Yeah, it's a good question. Several of them have been painted in Minneapolis and also in St. Paul. Minneapolis does have a policy about putting these murals in, and so does St. Paul, and I think also Madison, Wisconsin. So these have definitely been done successfully before, and this would be the first sort of set of murals that would actually incorporate Safe House to School themes.
Have you had contact with the Grand, and what's their involvement?
Yeah, the Board of the Grand voted in favor of supporting this, so they would be a partner in this project.
And, and the question is, after the three years, who's going to pay to clean it up? What's your thoughts on that whole process?
I talked to someone who works for Springboard of the Arts, or for the Arts, excuse me, in Minneapolis, and she had been involved in one of these projects before, and essentially, the folks there actually just, they, they let it fade. After a while, the paint fades, and it doesn't look unseemly, she said. It's just sort of lightens. And so that was there. They didn't remove it at all, take any action to do that.
I guess I have a question. You talk about this being a way to kind of get out the word of Safe House to School, and so what type of murals are you kind of thinking that will be out there, or is there a better way to use that money to get that message out? In your selection of the sites, you said are four-way stops, are they on the bike route?
Yep, all four of the locations are on the bike routes that the council approved, so that would also be part of the messaging. I do have an example of some of the projects that have been completed. I'll zoom in here, just a little bit. You can kind of see what we're thinking about there, but as far as, your first question about, it was about-
How it ties back to your mission of Safe House to School, like the ones that you have here really is just art. And it's not, I think your mission here is to promote-
Right. So we'd be creating a subcommittee that would have schools and, you know, school representatives, obviously myself from the heart of New Ulm, and the representatives from the Grand, and also some, a city council representative perhaps. But the goal of this subcommittee would be to filter the designs that are submitted in order to have them meet the criteria. And one of the criteria for this project is that it relates to Safe House to School. So the murals have to incorporate some element of active transportation, walking, biking, or safety. And the funding, I should mention, is also going to be private. We're looking for grants to accomplish this project.
So you're not asking for any city money-
Correct.
Part of this project?
Yep. No, no city money should be involved.
And just following up on this, how, how would you and the Grand reach out to artists for their submission and their proposals?
Yep. The Grand in the Fire Hydrant Project had a, basically a call for proposals, as I understand it. So that would be a similar thing to what we would be doing. We would be using, you know, social media and stuff like that to kind of get this call for proposals out. Yep, and that would include the criteria that we had discussed.
And my understanding from what I read is the city council would have the final vote on the-
Yep.
Items that you would select.
Yep.
Okay. And your timetable looks like you want to, and I know from working on the Fire Hydrant Project, you do need some, some time for submissions. A lot of our artists are full-time employees elsewhere, and it takes time to get those things submitted. I did talk with Mr. Curry a little bit about this project. I'd like to have him spend a few minutes talking about what he knows and any concerns he might have, if we could, please. If acceptable to the chair?
Sure.
Curry, Public Works, Lieutenant. Concerns I had, and I talked to Nathan, is the removal of it for, for seal coating, the intersections. They can't, seal coat won't stick to paint. And after reading your traffic paint, your submission, traffic paint, the only way I know to get it off is to grind it or sandblast it. It will not come off with a power washer. It will wear off in, in the traffic lanes, but the part of the intersections that don't have vehicle traffic aren't going to wear off. So there'd be an issue of getting it off somehow.
And the options for that, or what?
Grinding it or sandblasting it is the only way I know of to get it off.
Talk about those costs.
Well, the grinders, we have a line grinder, but it's designed to grind off a traffic line, not an intersection. And it's going to leave a groove. A good example is that is by off of County 29 and West Ridge Road, where they changed the traffic patterns going into Holiday Station. If you look in the center, that was double yellow, and that's gone. You can see the, the grind marks are still there, and that was five years ago. So and, and sandblasting it would be, you'd have to tarp the intersections, the sidewalks to contain it, and then physically go out there with a hand sandblaster to remove it, and then sweep and pick up the sand and the material.
Mr. Curry, can you give us some idea of when each of these intersections would be scheduled?
I most certainly can.
I'll bet you can.
The Payne Street was just done last year, so that's not scheduled to be done again until 2020. And Third North in Minnesota is scheduled for next year, and State Street is scheduled for next year. Not saying we can't move that up to this year, if that's what you so decide.
Right, so we could, we could move those two up for this year, then they'd be done. And then they wouldn't be scheduled again till 20-
2022.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
And the other, just one more question. Looking at the removal issue, that could be one of the criteria for the art.
True.
That it not be, you know, sort of flat surface, but more along the lines of a, sort of a line, I'm so unimaginative.
Right.
But it could be like a, just a line drawing of a bicycle.
Correct. The denser the, the design, the harder, the longer it's going to be to get it off. Yes, that is correct.
I would wonder what Minneapolis and Madison, Wisconsin are doing for their paint. They'd have to have the same issue and same discussion, but we don't know that, right, that they have some specialized paint for this type of, maybe we need to find that out before we can decide on this project. Because that cleanup does bother me with that cost, and not that we couldn't have the costs associated in with this entire project and the fundraising, but like I said, I would assume Minneapolis and Madison have had the same discussion.
As far as, what kind of work are you thinking it needs to be done? Seal coating of the road, or you're saying the road needs to be asphalt?
Just seal coated.
Just seal coated.
Yes, correct.
Now, you go out, I mean, we were at the national conference, they were painting some of the bicycle paths green. I mean, they were- bicycle paths green, I mean, that's literally what they were doing, so I know painting is happening all over country on different projects and streets, so I don't know if there's some new style of paint that maybe is easier to remove, I don't know.
That could be, I'm not aware, I'm just, we're talking strictly traffic paint.
Yep, which is what you have kind of your concern on, and Nathan, you don't know for sure yet at this point?
No.
Well, I have a question for Kurt. When you seal coat them, if you would move them up to seal coating them next year, would they be able to paint on them even next year? I mean, I would think that, that seal coating takes time for it to really.
Well, we would seal coat it this year in June, and it would take, yeah, so given a good month, we'd have to sweep it three or four times to get the loose rock off, then they should be good to go.
And then I have another question. How did you come up with four sites? Why did you start there, why didn't we start with, maybe with one, or, you know? How did we come up with four?
The idea was to start with just one site, but then we s- we s- sort of got the Grand as a partner and we started looking at, you know, if we're doing Safe Routes to School, there are sort of three main schools in town, there's the public schools, there's the Lutheran, St. Paul's School, and then St. Paul's Elementary, and St. Anthony's Elementary too then. So New X. And then obviously, the Grand thought, you know, since the Grand was on board with the project, it would have been cool to have a mural by the Grand as well in Minnesota.
And I, I, I could see probably one of these murals downtown, like by the Grand, where we have the fire hydrants, but we did not expand it outside of our downtown area. Just something to think about. Why start with four if we don't know how it's gonna be able to be removed?
Well, except that we won't know how it's gonna work for five or six or seven or eight years, and I know that the District Eighty-Eight and the Safe Routes to School grant, you know, they're really moving to get kids walking to school now, you know, especially with the, with the shift over and, and the way the schools are gonna be configured. I'm really in support of this project, perhaps because I've worked with some of those other groups that, that are working toward the Safe Routes to School, and I think that's really the important part. I don't think there's be anything more flamboyant way to say, look, we're, we're really doing something to encourage kids to walk to school, to encourage parents to allow their kids to walk to school, to say, look, motorists, kids are walking to school on this space, there's a school here, it's a big, it's a big sign. And I just don't think that there's any, any insurmountable problems. I note that on our issue sheet, the, the motion is to receive the project proposal and direct the Safety Council, Safety Commission to consider the project. And as we move forward, I'm sure this will be in front of us several more times, and I think we can probably address each one of those issues as they come up.
My, my comment on this, I, when I first read this, I'm like, why the Safety Commission, what, what's here that is a safety concern if, and other than the traction paint, and I, I'm not sure if it needs to go to a Safety Commission. Go ahead.
Well, as certainly anything that's occurred in the public right of way has always progressed through the, the Safety Commission. You don't want it to go there, that's your prerogative, but when, when I talked with the city engineer and, and the assistant city engineer, it was the direction was gonna be to take it directly to the Safety Commission. And I said, well, I don't see any reason why we can't, you know, get it out here and talk about it. Kick it back to the Safety Commission and, and come back with, yes, the, the traffic paint is, is okay for motorcycles, or, you know, scooters, or whatever, I think, you know, cars and trucks are fairly stable, they got four tires, but is this the kind of thing that, that you can do with motorcycles? Don't know. The other, the other question that they might delve further into is, I don't know if these pictures are, you know, thirty minutes after they were completed. I'd be really interested to see what does one of these look like after a year? You know, once it's been down, come back a year, and what's it look like? Is it black stripes? Not, not, I won't say like people spinning their tires. I'm just saying when you lay down salt and sand in the intersection, we have to repaint every one of our crosswalks. Every year we repaint that, and there's a reason, because they get wore off from the traffic.
And the salt, I suppose, kills it.
And, well, the grit and the sand just, and the spinning tires takes that, that paint right off, so. I mean, I even see it in my own garage, my tire tracks go right in, that, that paint's gone. So I'd just be curious to see what, what a year's worth of time, if, if these are brand spanking new, that never been drove over. Or if this is what they look like after a year, I mean, that, to me, that, that'd be important, because just the, the touch-up. So I think a little bit more in-depth analysis from the, maybe the safety side and and, you know, we could, it could come back at the, the meeting after the next Safety Commission.
That's a visual issue.
Well, but I think, I think just as a, as a person, if I were sitting on the Safety Commission and I knew that every, every issue that involved the right of way came before us, I'd be sort of taken aback or disrespected if it, if it didn't come through that body.
I think too, based on what Roger made a comment, I think it should go to the Safety Commission and at least they, they have an input to us.
I guess I just wasn't seeing a safety issue, but.
Yeah, I, I think that we don't really have information this evening about the traffic paint. Our street commissioner mentioned his familiarity with it as far as removing it, but as a motorcyclist, I also know that depending upon the type of traffic paint, there've been plenty of times on a corner, if you hit a line that's painted, you slip. And whether you're on a motorcycle, scooter, or a bicycle, which we're trying to encourage, what kind of paint is gonna be used, what is the coefficient of friction, and are we, I mean, we don't want anyone to get hurt, we certainly don't want to get sued by anyone claiming that somehow we made our streets less safe.
And, and I'm interested that other cities have done this, and so I think that there can be more information that we can gather and.
I, I guess, if I had to vote right now, I, I probably would not be in support of it, I think there's some concern, and there's maintenance issues, and so I really am in favor of sending it to the Safety Commission and getting more information to be a little bit more comfortable with that decision, but I do have some concerns, and I, I'm not sure if in those neighborhoods, what those neighbors feel, do they want that mural on the corner of their street? Do they, you know, do they care? I don't know.
Well, I think there'd be, there'd be a public hearing before we put it down, wouldn't there?
No, you don't, you don't have to have a public hearing on this, the city council controls the right of way, but if you wanted to, you, you know, you could say, neighborhood, you know, send a, send a postcard out to everybody in, in these affected areas and say, we're thinking doing this, there's a public hearing, come on, you know, tell us what you wanna think, but that's optional, that's up to the council if they wanna do that.
You know, and, you know, I, I support the arts and everything, but I think we have to look that it's not a road distraction, you know, that people are gonna be, you know, distracted from their driving, you know, we want them, you know, they're distracted enough right now, these days and stuff like that.
Stop signs, it's not a four-way stop.
Correct, but you mean just driving through where there's people walking out to take a look at it and, you know, and stuff, I don't know, you know.
Well, and part of the idea, part of the idea, it's like the charos, it's, it's almost a signal to the drivers. This is a, this is a school route, you're, you're really, in case you haven't noticed, you're right by St. Anthony, you know, be careful, so.
But in, in, just I think, you know, in trying to get the message that they're getting, wanna get out, to have it on the ground like that, I think, yep, for a month, it's kinda like a billboard, once it's there over a month, and you know, that's a common traffic area, how many people are really gonna notice that mural? You know, so I don't know if there's another way to use that money to, to get better bang for their buck. I'm just not sure, and I think with the maintenance issues that, that, I just have some concerns, so.
I would assume there's a mixture of things that you're doing as far as bike safety notification and.
Oh, absolutely, the Safe Routes to School program is not just for murals, it's obviously, there's a lot of things we're doing. The bike routes is a good example of, of, of one thing that we've worked on to be able to inform parents of how best their child, or the safest routes on bike around New Ulm. Similarly, we're working on walking routes, because it's not exactly the same when you're walking as you're biking, you can walk downtown and it is safe, so. Doing that as well, so there are other things to try and educate the public about, you know, safety.
You wanna take some time and get ahold of Minneapolis and Madison and whoever else and find out what they're doing, what kind of paint they're doing? What, some of the issues that we've talked about here tonight.
Do a little more homework. You know.
Lentils.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna push the motion forward then, so with, that we move it on to the Safety Committee, in addition to have more information about what's going on in these other cities and what, what they're utilizing, and I, I support the project, we have some great artists in our community. I, I think it's a worthwhile project, we just need to, my, my concern is, is in three years, what's it gonna look like? That's, so hopefully there's some paint that can be able to either be painted over or blasted off, or whatever, without too much expense. So that, that's where I'm gonna be looking at, so hopefully you can bring me back that information too.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? See and none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries. Item three E, Consider Motion to Authorize the Request from the Citizens of the, citizens for city staff to snowplow salt, sand, the recreational paved trails during the winter months for pedestrians and bicycle recreational purposes. Mr. Grummet, you got any more on that, or we got it on?
I was, I was asked to put this on the agenda.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, and I, I, when I, I live on Eight Twenty South German, and if you're familiar with the bike trail, you can access the bike trail from Seventh South and also from Twelfth South. And from Seventh to Third, that section of the trail is plowed, because that's, that's the dog park, and it's also the place where the city stores its snow. And then going south from Twelfth, that is plowed, because people have to get into their storage area, so you've got those two stretches, and then I found out that one of my neighbors has been taking it upon himself, because he's noticed all the foot traffic on that path between Seventh and Twelfth, he's been taking it upon himself to take his snow blower down there and plow that path, so. I think there are a lot of people who are using, using that paved trail, and I would like to hear from some of those folks as far as what, what their thoughts are, whether, whether the idea is to ask the city to plow the entire five miles of the trail, or if there's certain sections that are used more than others. So that's, that's what I'd like to hear from the people who are in the audience.
I have a comment also, I was also contacted by a resident wanting, inquiring about the trail being plowed, and I had, was conversing with him and had told him, you know, that, you know, if, if he had a group of people, you know, together, and it looks like they've started a petition, and that there's many names on that petition, you know, that if they can show a need, that we would probably take a look at that, and so I feel too, I think with more winter biking, you know, we've had a very nice winter, and there's people with the wider tires and they wanna do some winter biking, to have that trail available and the walkers, there's just, I think it's just very well-used in that we might really wanna consider plowing it at least.
And I think my concern is, I wanna know the costs, obviously, and what, what is that all gonna entail, once you start plowing, you also gotta sand it, and and I talked to Mr. Curry about that some today too, and I know he's got some information I think we should have as well. So that's where kinda.
I guess I, I question whether we have to sand or not. No, it's, I'm, it's my understanding, I thought that like in Mankato, they plow, but they don't really treat it with anything. I could be wrong, but.
I've made calls today, spent time on the phone, talked to other cities that do have bike trails, and of course, every city has concern. And one of the biggest concerns is safety, and just kinda what you made a comment there. What they all told me is, if you plow a bike trail, and you salt the bike trail, you're gonna have accidents, because what's gonna happen is the salt that you put out is gonna go off to the side, get into the snow, the snow's gonna melt later on, come out to the bike trail, and you're gonna have ice on the bike trail, which is gonna give you liability. So they said, it depends on the size of the city, to the amount of people that you got commuting, to whether it's feasible to do it. If it's Safe Routes to School was their number one priority, they took care of those right away. The second priority is people that are commuting, the last priority is recreational. Because the simple reason is, is your liability is getting out there, and some of them do parts of trails, some do a lot of the trails, and I guess I got some concerns with, you know, putting salt out and have liability.
I can tell you that people have, have slipped and, and gone in, in over tea kettle without it being plowed, you know, so I mean, that's, that's gonna, that's gonna be an issue regardless of whether we.
I realize too, that they have the bigger bikes and things like that, they do trail drives and stuff, so, but, you know, how far we wanna go, I guess I'd like to hear from the audience. If anybody has anything on it or whatever, but.
Lindy Winters, Heart of New Ulm Project, and since I've worked with the Heart of New Ulm Project, I've been asked every year several times why the city doesn't plow the, the bike trail, so I had another coworker ask that, and it's like, well, call your city council member, let them know, and then then it was recommended that we get a, put a petition out, and we've had over a hundred signatures on the petition, and people are, use the trail for a variety of different reasons, people use it for recreation, they use it for transportation, and they feel like it's safer to use the bike trail in the wintertime for walking. They feel there, it's a little bit safer than walking on the streets and sometimes on, on the sidewalks as well, so it just, it helps promote the mission of the Heart of New Ulm Project, that we're an active city, and we and I think we need to think about the bike trail as more than just recreation anymore, and we have to start thinking about it as a transportation corridor, and if you think about it in a transportation corridor, you wouldn't think about not clearing the streets. So if it becomes a, a way for people to get to and from work, you're ju- you're helping them commute. And I know a lot of work sites located along the bike route have people that do commute, and they also use it during their break time to go out and walk. And we wanna promote work site wellness as well, and healthy employees have better outcomes and are more productive.
So getting back to Roseanne, how much are we talking? All of bike trails?
The, yeah, the section from, I don't know how far north I'd go, but I would go down to Twentieth Street, Twenty South, and then the, the bike trail that's not the sidewalk portion, is that fair enough? Does that, the section that we're talking about, which that's five, maybe six miles worth of in distance?
Well, just speaking for my part of the, I, I, I think Counselor Fisher and I are the two council people that have have the bike route in their area, and you know, to me, it's getting back and forth to Hy-Vee. Or getting back and forth, you can get pretty close to Craft and pretty close to the other workplaces, if you worked at the Holiday Inn or those sorts of things, you can get back and forth on the bike trail, but I'd ask Counselor Fisher what people are telling her they use the bike trail for.
Well, they really haven't really designated what they've actually used it for, I was thinking it was more for recreation on the north, or, yeah, the north end. I would, I would push to just plow it all, once you're on there, just go from one end to the other.
But are we talking Highland also, there's a bike trail goes the whole Highland, all the way from.
That's the bike route.
That's the bike route.
It's still a bike trail though.
Highland is plowed anyway, I believe.
We, we plow one side, and we just plow basically a, a bike route sidewalk, 'cause on the
Well, 'cause it's.
One side of the street, we have both, so we plow just one path.
Right, so the, there's a path already plowed there.
Right, so.
So you wouldn't plow anymore.
That, that's yours. Unless, that's yours up there on Highland, all right.
We used to plow both sides, but now we just plow the one.
Okay.
I guess I would like to hear more from people that want it.
Bob Beck, I live at three eighteen South Franklin in New Ulm and, the, the bike, I think all the council members have at least a portion of the bike route or bike trail in your, in your section, so everybody has a piece of, a piece of the pie. The only section that's not, does not have snow removed on it is the section from Twentieth South all the way up to, what is it, twenty-third, where it comes out by...
Oh, right, by, yeah, Twenty Third North.
Apartment complex up there. So that's the only stretch that's, that's not paved. And the rest of it, going by the new high school, is, they have, you've removed the snow from that ever since that's been put in, so that's been going on on an annual basis and there's no salt or sand added to that also. And that does get a lot of foot traffic up there. I noticed that hours after it was cleared from this last snow event, there were fresh tracks you could see where, up there, including mine, so. So I, I'm a user of the bike trail, my wife and I use it a lot and if you plow that section down there, on the, the original section, we would use that also. We do use it to go to the grocery store, walk from Hy-Vee to where, where we live, you know, so, you know, and we would do that in the wintertime, it was plowed, you know, rather than the sidewalk, so. It's also, those are also, that stretch is also some of the longest stretch without intersections in it, so it makes it for a lot easier to, you don't have to worry about cross, cross traffic when you go through there, so. So, you know, if, if it works fine in the budget, that's great, you know, if not, just go around it, I guess.
Well, and I, I was, I read the Journal and I think that we can at least see how it works. I think I'd like to hear if we've got enough money in our budget to at least try it for this part of the winter, then we can look at it and I'll try to pay a little more attention to how much use it is and see if the costs are, are prohibitive, but...
I guess it's the costs are difficult not knowing how much snow we're going to get and, yeah, it's hard to estimate.
I think you can, you can generalize though, to be quite honest, we have approximately ten snow events per winter, some are heavier than others, you know. You know, if you've got five miles of, of trail and you can, if you got to make two passes, you know, paths, one down one side and come back to the other side, you know, you got ten miles, it, if you could do an operational ten mile an hour, that's going to take you an hour, but, so you've got some time to get there and some time to get back and miscellaneous, you know, events to make it happen, so let's say two hours per event and there's, there's six hour, or six snow events still to come, you know, for the rest of the winter, so, you know, you got twelve, fourteen hours all total when you all said done, if you don't do sand and salt, you just plow it and, you know, good enough. So, you know, I, I don't think we're talking monumental dollars. I think when this originally, the, the bike trail was originally opened up, it was some loss of local government aid and, you know, at that time, it was, we had to focus on the important stuff like the streets and whatnot, but if the council, you know, wanted to, you know, what have we got, fifteen hours at even twenty dollars an hour, you know, under five hundred dollars probably, you know, kind of a thing.
Well, and Counselor Schultz was talking about priorities, I mean, obviously this isn't, this isn't going to be the first thing that's plowed, we've got to get the downtown plowed and the other major routes and...
And snow removed and, yeah, streets cleared and then, kind of a low priority.
But, but I'm certainly willing to try it for the rest of this winter and...
Another person wants to speak too.
Yes, yes.
Hi, Cindy Weedle in seven twenty-six South Front Street, I live. And one thing I just wanted to mention too, you know, you mentioned the cost of salt. I'm wondering too if we really even actually have to salt and sand it, because I know the area that you're talking about between Seventh South and Twelfth South where that, somebody goes down with the snow blower, you know, if you've got the sun shining within a couple days, that is clear down to the, to the pavement, so, you know, just kind of wanted to comment on the expensive salt and sand. And then also too, if it's something that you don't want to look at doing year round, another suggestion I would have is clean it off in the spring, because, you know, come March, end of February when it's nice out, and I know we can't control if it's going to snow in February or, or March, but I know that the nicer months in spring, we're waiting for the bike trail to unthaw so we can get our bikes out and, and...
One of the phone calls I got was mentioning exactly that.
Yeah.
And I like to walk it in March, it's warmer.
Yeah, but you can't control it, it could snow again in March, but, I don't know.
A lot of snow in March.
Those were just some additional thoughts I had, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Miller.
Lifetime Goose Towner, by the way. Thanks Cindy. Tony Miller, three twenty-seven South Valley, I am a resident of Goose Town, of course, and we've had a couple Goose Town meetings, Friends of Goose Town meetings, and one of the things that came up that we talked about was maintenance at parks and so on. And, and shortly, right towards the end of one of our meetings, one of the questions came up about whether or not the trail, why the trail hasn't been plowed. And one comment was, we have city trucks that drive by with their plows up in the air, pickup trucks, they're driving right by the trail and they, all they have to do is swing in there and plow it out, so it doesn't sound like it's that, would be that critical of a thing, based on those meetings, but I also made a phone call to, to Humane Society, to the Humane Society, Brown County Humane Society. And as soon as I suggested that we might be doing something, this is before I found out that there was a petition and all this, as soon as I mentioned it to the gal there, she says, there's at least a mile and a half a day that we take the dogs and the cats out. And, for the dogs specifically, the cats don't go that long, but the dog, the dogs, they take a mile, mile and a half minimum and they, and right now, because the trail isn't plowed, the whole trail isn't plowed, they have to go down on the streets, which isn't that big of a deal, but they said that they would use it, they would use it constantly if they could have parts of it opened up. So that was the two, two things that came out from it. Like I said, the, we got towards the end of a meeting and it was discussed, and then I found out through the grapevine that, well, actually through email, that there was a petition started, so I put out a couple of emails to that effect and I had some comments come back from some people saying, I would walk the trail if it was plowed, pretty much. So I wanted to make sure you knew that there are some people, even though it might be recreational, I know there's been some things said about possibly using it to go to work, I used it as, when I was bicycling, I used it to go to three M every day, I'm retired now, but I would have used it more in the wintertime if I could do that, you know, if it was, if it was plowed, so. The segment that I'd be talking about would be, easiest way to say it would be Applebee's to the KC Road is the best way that I would describe it. That segment, that's the first segment of the bike trail that I think was developed. So in my opinion, from what I've understood from people is, the rest of it, the circle route, that gets a lot, most of that gets plowed anyway, I understand, but what I would say and I, and I, and I want to, I wouldn't want to speak for everyone, but I'd say that would be the segment that we're concerned about here is from Applebee's to probably the KC Road. So, that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Curry's here, do we want to hear from the Street?
There we go.
Yeah, why not?
By Mr. Curry, Cam and I have been talking, he's, he's going to take responsibility for the bike trail snow removal?
Right.
Or is he going to, or is he going to have Park and Rec take care of it?
Well, I mean, that's, that's, that's for the city manager.
I'm making an assumption, maybe an incorrect one.
Push it, push it to Park and Rec, because every utility, or city I call, Park and Rec.
I think that's, well, and they do the circle route up there, so, I'm just saying.
But it's black, it's not green, it's black.
I want to hear if you have any concerns about this from just your perspective.
Well, for a plow, just a plowing aspect, no, you know, especially if it's a low priority, you know, third day when we get everything else done, sure, we can take that pickup that's driving by, he's doing alley routes when you see him, that's why he's skipping all over the place. Now, the third day, sure, we could, we could plow. Sanding, it's a whole nother ballgame. So I've only got the big stuff, so I'd have to, I'd have to sand it with a dump truck. That's where Tom would come in with his little tool cat, but that would be a chore for that even.
That probably wouldn't be that good for the trail itself.
Not running a dump truck on it, absolutely not, or the salt as far as that, right.
And we don't really sand up on Highland and any other place, I guess I hadn't really thought about that till we were talking about it, so...
The, the stretch of bike trail you're talking about does, is a low end, so it gets a lot of drainage to it, so that's just...
There's going to be some slippery spots.
There's going to be some slippery spots.
And, and one thing to remember is, we have those slippery spots in the spring anyway, you get freeze and refreeze and, you know, yeah, you know, so I think people are, know that, know that when they go out in the winter and...
I guess I'd support it provided we don't salt or sand, you know, as long as we just plow, because one of the other issues that was reported to me from other cities is environmental, if you're going to start putting salt down there and things like that, that you've got a whole nother issue.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I support it as well too, I, I got an email today from an individual that talked about that's where our retired folks are moving more towards doing more of the biking, doing more of this, and the Heart of New Ulms project and the biking project, I, it kind of all fits, so, I'm going to offer a motion to plow the recreational paved trail during the winter months, low priority, no salt, no sand.
Second.
We got a motion in a second, any more discussion?
And then I think we should review it for next year before we decide if we're going to continue it for next year, hear from the residents, if it worked, if it, if it didn't, I mean, if, I don't want to waste the money if people aren't going to use it, so...
Then we'll know, then we'll have a number, if it's five hundred bucks or a thousand dollars, you know.
Sounds a little bit better, so if the, if Matt could sort of keep an eye on that or track that for us.
I think Brian up it.
I mean, how much time is it really, how much time it really takes to clean that path?
Yep.
After we've had some experience doing it.
Mr. President, just for clarification, we're talking about the original five mile stretch?
Thank you.
Any more discussion? See you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries. But no more business?
There we go.